Call this meeting of the Hamilton City School Board of Education. Mr. Fraser, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Kopus?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
And I will make a note for the minutes that Mrs. Matthews is out this evening.
Yes, she's out ill. Okay, so, Mr. Holbrook.
Yes, tonight starts our series of presentations from our schools. And Ridgeway Elementary is up first this evening, and so I'm going to introduce Kathy Wagenfield and let her take it from there. Kathy?
Okay, good evening, everybody. It's been a great day at school. The kids are all hyped up about the parade. And so, we're hoping that it doesn't get canceled. I don't think we're going to get the big rain till later tomorrow. So, Ridgeway Elementary School, we have a theme this year. We are world changers. And we are carrying this theme throughout the year. I like actionable themes that you can act upon. Years ago, I was guilty of having a Lego theme. But, as I get older, and I've done a good job of that, getting older, I...
I have too.
We really like actionable themes. So, move it forward, Hillary, and we'll talk a little bit about it. Every Wednesday is World Changer Wednesday. The staff hall has World Changer shirts, and we just made them available for the kids to buy, too. You may see some wearing them at the parade this evening. But every Wednesday, we recognize people. The cool thing about this is the families are involved. This goes with the Friday Connection. I do separate emails to the parents. And the parents are nominating their child and sending in a picture of them doing the act. So, it's been really, really amazing, and the kids are so excited. This is what they get. They get a really, really cool award there with their picture on it and with a brief description of what they've done. This is just a couple highlights. Harper is a world changer in her community. She participated in Peyton's Lemonade Stand, a fundraiser that collects money for kids that are in the hospital or face other hardships. She collected over 800 this year, but over four years of running it, she's donated over 4,000. So, that's just one example. But then, we get such cute ones. McKenna, I think her mommy sent this in. McKenna's a world changer in her home. McKenna's a great big sister. She's always looking after her brother and teaching him new things. When they go on family walks, she holds his hand. As you could see from the wall earlier, we have tons of world changers already ready. We're going to fill the entire wall up this school year.
Oh, thank you. I'm Hillary Snively, Assistant Principal, and I'm getting ready to talk about PBIS, some initiatives we did last year, which were new to Ridgeway. So, last year, we implemented a second semester with third and fourth quarter incentive. And so, we saw a 9.5% reduction in office referrals overall last year. And I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but it was equated to about 45. That's 45, you know, office referrals or phone calls or paperwork, though we, you know, didn't have to have those conversations because they were motivated by something positive to look forward to. So, last year, in May, we had a glow party. So, students, it was very strict. They could have no office referrals, none. In this, we did a PBIS pep rally in January, coming back from break. And then, the students knew from that day forward that they could have no office referrals. And this was probably the week, last week of school that we did this?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so they had to hold out all year long. So, this year, because we saw a great change in our office referral numbers, we're going to do something every quarter. Do we want to tell them?
You want me to tell them?
Yeah. Okay, so our first quarter is coming up in October, a week or two away. We're doing a popcorn and pop it party. And then, we have one for second quarter that we're super excited about. It's the Masked Singer, but teacher version. So...
The teachers will be dressed up.
They will be dressed up and blow up costumes, you name it. And the students will get to come and guess the Masked Singer. And again, they have to have no office referrals for that quarter.
They will have one every quarter.
Yes, and they get a clean slate every quarter, so if they didn't make the first quarter, and so on.
We're going to talk about our data, because we love to talk about our data. Hillary's going to talk about MAP, and I'm going to talk just a little bit about OST.
So, I think it's important to kind of look back where we've come from after COVID. So, this is three years of trend data, and you can see, I know it might be difficult to see, but the diamond shape represents like the goal for that grade level, where they should be. If the bar graph is touching the diamond, that means that they are meeting the growth. So, you can see back in 2020 to 2021, we have some grade levels not touching. And then, we bounce back, and you can see that we've held on strong in every grade level, meeting or exceeding. So, if the diamond is encompassed, we're exceeding that growth. If it's surpassed it, exceptional growth. Here's the same for math. Oh, I'm sorry. So, for ELA, you know, something that Andrea said a couple of years ago is consistent growth equals gains and achievement. So, we'll see the achievement, maybe not this year, maybe next year, but consistently growing our kids in MAP is how we're going to get there. So, you can see our building average is the star, which is pretty incredible. The horizontal blue line is representing that yearly growth. So, if any of our grade levels are above that, they're exceeding growth for that grade Again, it's the same trend data. You can see the year before and then last year, where each of our grade levels, I mean, kindergarten, phenomenal. Yes, yes, and I thank you for saying that. You can see we are below the line the year before, and then, last year, they far exceeded many of the grade levels in growth. Here's the same for math, again, the diamond. You can see we held on strong and have continued to grow and over exceed our goals for growth each year. Same thing here is last year's. And then, the following slide, you'll see the year prior compared to last year. In sixth grade, kind of had a similar bounce back. Our building average, again, is always above the line, which is fantastic. And then, I'm going to hand it over to Kathy. She's going to talk a little bit about some OST data.
Well, if you haven't heard, we got 4.5 stars on the state report card. We were shooting for five. I don't know if you told them this news or not, but we were 0.4% away from getting five stars. So, I told the teachers they got five stars. So, that was incredible. My goal is to never go down, I don't want any less than 4.5 stars. Hopefully, five stars will get those results next year. Here's, here are the results from Ridgeway, our district and the state. We are the royal blue bar in each section. So, you can see how our OST scores come back. We pretty much are exceeding the state in everything except math or ELA fifth grade. By one. Then, this was last year's, the year before's state report card, 4.5. And if you look at the early literacy, we had two stars there. And we come back with four stars this past year, still with our five stars in gap closing, four in progress. We're going to see that achievement go up. We are, because we are pushing, pushing, pushing. How did we do it? Well, we had a lot of incentives, a lot of plans, a lot of planning with the teachers, and a lot of professional teachers. So, this is how we did it, and these are the people that did it for us. We're going to show you. These are some awards that they received for both MAP and OST at the end of the year. They're still hanging outside their doors if they receive them. We have MAP awards. If the teacher met their PGP goal, 75% or more kids meeting their growth or exceeding growth got an award. We had, they got an OST award if their scores were higher than the state average. And then, we had four teachers who had 100% of their kids meet or exceed their growth. So, these are the people that get us scores. I just passed over one of our sped teachers who was in charge of our ED, and their kids blew it out of the water. Okay, so, what's next? You got it. Five stars. Coming up next year. That's the goal, and we're sticking to it. That's all we have for this evening. Anybody have questions?
Just a comment, Kathy, and to your team. You guys have all, you are always, are way up there. And to see four and a half stars, I guarantee you'll get to five stars next year.
I think so, too.
No doubt. But thank you for all your hard work, your leadership, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. And I will pass that on to the staff, because...
Please do.
I spent a lot of time in your building last week, grandparents.
Oh, yes, you did.
You did an excellent job with that, and your staff did, too, and I enjoyed it. And every visit I have over your building, it's just phenomenal to see what's going on there.
It's a fun place.
And I hear about it every night.
Yep. Yep, and you saw someone you were related to in that video, star educator.
You're not taking credit for that, are you?
I taught her everything she knows.
Kathy, I just want to say how impressed I am every year you guys come in and you present and think, you're never resting on laurels. You're never saying, "I'm happy with a four, I'm happy with this." It's always pushing your students to go higher and higher. And, you know, I know you have some high-performing students up there, and to continue to see that growth above what's the expected growth, I mean, you could be all happy just having it, your, the bars hitting, the little stars or whatever they are, or squares, whatever that is. But you're exceeding that and always pushing to go higher. And when I see your kids and how excited they are, I've been around your school over the years, and their kids are happy to be at Ridgeway. They are excited to be there. Parents are happy to be there. And just seeing those faces just goes ahead and proves that time and time again. So, congratulations.
And to add to that, the kids in my neighborhood go to Ridgeway, and they are always happy. They're always talking about what they're doing in school. I always ask them, "How's it going?" And they're just, they're thrilled.
Good, 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 good. And we expect to see our high kids grow a lot this year because of a new initiative that the board is bringing to us that's going to do great, great things.
They're excited.
Good.
Principal Wagenfield, obviously, your state report card's incredible, and congratulations on that. And I appreciate the fact that you recognized and involved your teachers in a lot of that. And I don't mean to ask a foolish question here, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot at all, but I, you know, I ask all the principals this. I think it's important for us to know this. Hopefully, you feel like you are getting all of the support that you need from the district in order to accomplish your goals. I mean, your scores would indicate that you are, but I just want to make sure that you feel that way.
Plus some.
There you go. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Kathy, I had the opportunity to be up in your building today when you were on the announcements, announcing the individuals that were recognized to be world changers. And the excitement that those kids had to be recognized with their peers and that, it's really cool to see. And the other thing I noticed, it's all hands on deck, and every staff member there needs to be complimented. I was there during arrival. Everybody has a role. Everybody's present, everybody's doing something. From custodians to EAs to teachers to administration, they were all involved, and it's a process. But that speaks volumes to a bigger, a bigger piece with the community that you've created in your building. I sit and I think, and this, sitting here in this room with you probably seven or eight years ago, and we were trying to change the mindset of focusing off achievement and onto growth, because we knew that the achievement would come if we grew students. And it's exciting to see quadrants, and we're looking at that, and we're looking at growth, and we understand that really all of this is about growing kids. And we're seeing the results of that, and your buildings embrace that concept. And I just want to encourage the building to continue to do those things, and I know you're going to push them, but thank you and Hillary both for your leadership, as well as the staff. I think just a tremendous job.
Okay, I believe next on the agenda, Jeff Kilby, I think, is going to talk about some renovation to Garfield.
Yeah, Mr. Kilby is our Executive Director of Business Operations, and he's going to explain to you about some monies that we have available that are fairly narrowly earmarked into only doing a few things with. And so, Jeff, I'll turn it over to you and let you explain this a little bit. Do you want, do you want me to display?
Mike's going to pull that up.
Okay, okay.
You know? Okay. So, as Mike alluded to, our food service department gets funded a little bit differently some of our other departments, and we have an excess in that fund right now. So, when we were audited earlier this year, we were put on a spend-down plan. So, part of that plan, one of our ideas was, we went to go into Garfield and remodel that cafeteria using, again, these food service funds that can only be used for kitchens, for cafeterias. So, I don't want to, it's a 75-page-long document, but what I was hoping to get from you guys is a, I've got, I've got a few page numbers I'm going to ask Mike to scroll to, but what I was hoping is for you guys to get your eyes on it, because it is a big change. We're talking about a million-dollar project to redo Garfield's cafeteria. Want everybody to be on board before we move forward with doing public bids. We have not started that process yet, so this is... How much money is in that fund that we have to spend down? We are around $4 million in that fund, and they ask us to be around three months in reserve, so we need to get down to about $2 million. Sorry for interrupting. No, that's fine. So, Mike, if you go to about page four, so this is, this would be the idea, if you were standing in the hallway, if you're familiar with Garfield's cafeteria at all, this would be right across from the gym there. So, we're going to get ourselves a brand-new entrance and exit. We really think it's going to help the flow over there. I don't know if you've been there during lunch, but it's a little bit chaotic, so we really think that this is going to help us out.
Are you making the hallways wider? Because I know that's a huge pinch point right there.
No, we're using existing spaces. So, that's, that center part there is already there. That's the little concession stand. We're just opening it up. I think there are doors there that are out in the hallway that we're going to, no. I think we're just, it's not widening, I think it's just utilizing the space more, basically. And again, we've been working with Josh Marjoram while we've been coming up with these plans, so he's been working with us, offering design, you know, components that he would like to see. And Mike, if you head on down to about page 13, you'll see along here, too, they're going to be incorporating pictures from Hamilton. There'll be wraps on the walls of the clock tower, so there's, they're really using Hamilton, try to make this pop. So, this is kind of what we'll be looking at from a bird's-eye view. And Mike, if you head on, keep heading down next couple pages, I really want you to see the rendering where it's, what you're really going to get a look at, what it's going to look like. Keep heading down if you don't mind. These are two options, all the specs, blah, 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 that we'll be going out to bid on. Page 31 is where you're going to really see what it looks like. Here we go. So, this is what, you know, you can just tell it's a huge change. One of the reasons why we're able to do this at Garfield, and we chose Garfield, is they're the only cafeteria that is not like a cafeteria where we have to move tables in and out all the time. We're told that maybe three or four times a year, we would actually have to move this furniture out. All of this furniture is on wheels or can be folded up and moved. The booths that are in the back, there's a special pallet that they'll come with so that we can move those quickly and easily out of the way. So, again, this is kind of what we're looking at there. The thing in the middle at the top is called a stargazer, so that actually has the map of streets in the Garfield area, and it'll have LED lights that go around it to really kind of make that middle pop. And you can continue scrolling down there, Mike, just to give them, but then, there's a, again, another view of what that will look like for us. And if you head down, Mike, to page 48, if you, right now, there's a little classroom kind of off of the side to the cafeteria, so we're going to incorporate that into, they're going to call that a quiet room, so if you want to have a quiet place to study while you're at lunch, or Josh talked about, you know, maybe it's something you, as a reward for doing, you know, doing something good in school, you get to go into the quiet room during lunch. And then, if we head on down to page 60, this will give you an idea of what the kitchen service line is going to look like. And we're expecting pizza ovens and, you know, it's going to be a total upgrade. So, that is what I wanted to show you. Just was hoping to get some approval, some feedback. Obviously, it's a big change to Garfield. Just want to make sure everyone was on board before, again, we went out to the public bidding process. We would expect to complete this next summer. We would probably try, if we get approval and get all the bids in, we would try to paint over spring break so we can get a jump on it, because we have our summer camp that's at Garfield next summer. So, that challenges us, it kind of, it gives us July to get this done, but we're pretty confident that they'll be able to get that done next summer.
That looks great. I mean, what a great improvement, and I would think the kids will really enjoy that, so, and, you know, spending money, I mean, you know, it tells you how frugal we are that we come back and they're telling us to spend down money.
Much of that was COVID dollars. We got, there was so much federal and state funding that we were being given, that's a lot, that had a lot to do with it.
Right.
Is it use it or lose it type money, or?
Yes, they would probably start backing off our funding if we not get our balance down.
What do you anticipate going out for bids on?
So, as long as everybody's good with this tonight, we would start next week, working with the company to getting all the specs and the bid documents together. Hopefully, then by the board meeting at the end of November, we would like to at least get some quotes approved. November or December.
That cafeteria's needed to be updated quite a while. I don't think it was touched much at all when the Garfield was renovated the first time. And to have that little quiet area over there sounds great, the multiple seating configurations, that's really cool. It's like a, being at a, I mean, they can act like they're at a restaurant.
We're told, we visited three schools in Indiana where they've done this with the same company, and they all said the kids treated it like if they do if they go to a restaurant, as opposed to being in your school cafeteria. They saw behaviors get improved, all those sorts of things.
I love it. It's, it's great.
Yeah.
Great, good job on that.
Looks great.
Mr. Kilby, impressive project. And if I understood the, well, you explained why Garfield was selected, which I appreciate that, I wasn't aware of that. If I understood the numbers correctly, even after this project, we're still going to need to invest some other funds. Looking forward, any ideas on what the next projects may be?
So, even last year, we knew this was coming. We have started, our buildings are getting to be about 15 years old, so even last year, we spent about $1 million in new equipment. So, we still have some new equipment that needs replacing with, as it ages out. So, we'll spend a lot of money there. We want to do more in the elementary schools. We still think we can do some things in the elementary schools, it just, it can't be to this extent. But we can do things on the walls, maybe some of those wraps. We think we can make adjustments to kitchen lines. So, we're hopeful, and we've kind of shared that that's our plan, to try to hit each school to do something with the money.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Good job, thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, I think...
And Lisa.
Yes. We know who really, no, just kidding. Okay, what, next on the agenda, we brought, this was brought up a couple of weeks ago to have a discussion about Director of Communications, and I believe, Mrs. Blevins, you've given us a lot of information to look at. I've reviewed it, and I'd just open it up for questions from the group.
Yeah, I believe, just for context, Mr. Davidson kind of sent this out, asking for this to be a topic of...
Correct.
...discussion. So, I'm hoping tonight, we can just kind of share and get the rationale behind and the board members' feelings. Obviously, we won't make any decisions tonight. This is just an open discussion about kind of the needs, the wants, what different board members see, and then, we can figure out where to go from there.
One of my questions is, my understanding, as we kind of reconfigured admin, and some of the items that would have been under the Director of Communications before has now been dispersed out, can you kind of go through that? Like, I mean, the social media piece, who's handling it, and so...
Yeah, so, we took, we, as all of you know, we did use to have a Director of Communications who retired from the district. When that person retired, we actually did try to go out and recruit at first, but could not find a candidate that really met what we needed at the time. So, we kind of stepped back as a leadership team and looked and said, "How can we reorganize?" So, for instance, the biggest mode of communication in today's day and age is social media. And so, we kept that in-house with our, she's actually the Director of Educational Technology and Social Media. So, she helps to not only man our Facebook page and things like that, but she does our mass communication system. So, when we send out our Friday Connections to families, she actually builds the platform that they do. When we have to send out an emergency response, or a snow day, or anything like that, she is the person responsible for pushing that out via text, email, phone call, in every which way. In addition, we did renew our partnership with the Hamiltonian to start writing monthly articles, and that's kind of a team approach. There's a few of us that, depending on the different topics, you know, we kind of divide and conquer, so that's not to one person. We then have really leaned on our connection with TB Hamilton quite a bit. Steve and all of the TB Hamilton, Jeff Archibald, have been great to work with to help us capture our story. In addition, we also started putting out our quality profile, that that was something that is created in-house. Mrs. Tricia Smith, our Director of Educational Technology and Social Media, puts that together in conjunction with Mr. Holbrook, our executive team, to make sure those pieces are there. So, that's kind of where a lot of the components, I can't say every little position, you know, every little part of that, but they are through a collaboration both with TB Hamilton as well as internal stakeholders.
And also, when I kind of look through it, you know, and I looked at the other, you know, the salary levels throughout the, at different districts, and some of what the job descriptions are, some of that, it looked to me as if those are, those are things that we are expecting you to do.
Yeah, a lot of those with community relations, those types of pieces. And I've got some great ideas moving forward that I'd like to do with some monthly newsletters that go out to the community, some different pieces like that. I'm not going to ever say that we ever promote enough as a district. You know, I don't think there's ever enough times, if you don't tell your stories, other people will. So, that's an important piece. But there are components in other districts' job description that I think fall within our superintendent or other members of our team at times.
I just don't think you need to be writing a monthly or quarterly newsletter. It should be a communications structure. Things have changed. We're... We're competing. We're competing now for dollars. Thanks to the vouchers and Ed Choice. We need to promote ourselves. We have to market ourselves. And spending money to keep money and get money is well worth it. You said, we're trying to get our story out. It's not happening right now. You don't see it out there. You don't see things in the Journal News, you don't see it, things aren't getting out there. The other day, I shouldn't say the other, a few weeks ago, Hamilton played Baden. You could watch the game on YouTube through Baden's YouTube channel. And at halftime, they had a 30-minute presentation on how great Baden was. And it was very well-written, well-done. I'm sure Dirk Allen did it. And, you know, Baden's enrollment has gone up. They're marketing themselves. We need to do that, and we're not doing it right now. And I think it'd be, money well-spent, you can concentrate on what you need to concentrate on next year, rather than marketing Hamilton schools.
Anyone else that kind of wants to?
Yeah, I have a few comments. I've had an opportunity so far this school year to visit a few schools. And one of the things that each principal has shared with me is that they, you know, they, they're trying to promote their own schools, which they should. And I encourage them to do that. But I do think, and I agree with Mr. Davidson, I think we have so many great people, great winning stories going out there, going on in our district, we need to promote that. And I think if you, and I could be off-base here, but if you just look numerically, what it, give me an average, what does the district gain financially from one student? $5,000, $6,000 for enrollment?
It's about $6,500 to $7,000.
Per student?
Yeah.
Okay. So that tells me if we could attract or retain 15 students a year, comparatively speaking to some of the other salaries as Mrs. Baker spoke, you know, that would, that would pay for that position. You know, and I'm relatively new to the board here, but I'm pretty certain, the quality profile, by the way, which was excellent, if Mr. Holbrook was responsible for that, that's once a year. To me, that's not enough promotion for the district. I'm also fairly certain that some of the publications that we have out in the hallway here on the table, I, I'm not sure those are current. Those may actually be several years old. I mean, they might have been updated somewhat, but that, I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's what we want to publicize our district with outdated material. Let me, let me ask you, bear with me here just a second. I've got something I want to share with you. This will take 30 seconds. I want to read something, and then I have a question for you. The Hamilton City School District and the Hamilton community lost one of their biggest fans and supporters with the recent death of Mr. Bill Wilks. Mr. Wilks was a 1949 graduate of Hamilton High School and was a member of both Big Blue Football and Basketball Teams, which were Ohio State Champions. Played three years of basketball at Ohio State University and two years of quarterback for the Buckeyes under Coach Woody Hayes. This is the important part. Among Wilks's numerous civic involvements, he served eight years on the Hamilton City School Board of Education. He led fundraising efforts for the Virgil M. Swarms Stadium Turf and the sound system and the Alexander Hamilton statue located in downtown Hamilton. In the closing comment is, may we honor this extraordinary man with a moan of silence. They're going to, this will be read, I think, tomorrow night at the football game. Does anybody know who wrote that? Who in our district wrote that? Nobody in our district wrote that. The reason is, we don't have anybody in our district right now that knows Hamilton well enough, knows the people of Hamilton well enough, and the history of what they've done for our schools and our community to write that.
So the Journal wrote it?
No. Our former Director of Communications wrote it. And that's another point that I want to make. That person's been retired for three years now, something like that? I should know, but I don't, three or four years? I can tell you definitively, that person still gets phone calls from our district asking her directions on how to do certain things. Who to call, who to contact, where did you do this, how'd you accomplish that? So that tells me that however we disperse those duties, they're not being handled correctly if you're still seeking help from someone that's been gone for four years. Mrs. Blevins, as I talk with you, I think you are off to a great start, and I commend you for that, and I think you're going to do extremely well. But the fact is, is you're not from Hamilton and you don't know these things. I believe it would benefit you greatly to have someone on your team, and it would benefit our district greatly to have someone on our team that does. Okay, because as Mr. Davidson pointed out, get on YouTube, watch that video from Baden. It'll make you think for a second about how we are being, and I hate to say recruited, but how we are being out-recruited. Now, I also spoke with Mr. Frazier. Apparently, and this was disappointing to me, there is no way for us to track what we are gaining or losing because of Ed Choice.
There isn't, yeah.
Yeah, I know. To me, that's ridiculous. Whoever thought of that should be fired, but.
I think that was at the state level.
It is, it is. I understand.
I was going to say, I don't think there's anybody here.
I don't think you get to fire them.
No, no.
They just don't want us to know.
And I, and I understand it, but I, again, I just think that's absolutely ridiculous that we don't have access to that, but I accept that we don't. But if we know that our enrollment is going down, and is that not correct?
Actually, we have some, some current enrollment numbers that are a little bit surprising to us this year. Enrollment as of now is actually up a little bit from last year. We were projecting a, a decline.
Yes.
And that was also in my note to the board.
Yes.
About an increase in enrollment. And that's one of the things that we track every Monday morning, and we have a discussion about it every single week.
Well, I'm glad the enrollment is up. That's good for us financially. But as you indicated, the projection was that it would go down. I'm glad that it's not. It shouldn't go down. This is a great district.
Can, can I ask a question on that, on the enrollment piece? That the state gives us, what was the dollar amount?
$7,000.
We get roughly $7,000.
Okay, how much does it cost us to educate a student?
Well, those numbers are all published out there. I think it is somewhere between 13 and 15 grand, somewhere around there.
Okay, so I, I'm not, I'm not arguing the point that we want higher enrollment, you know, because I think we've got a great district. But the fact that if we increase enrollment is not necessarily going to, is not necessarily going to have us create dollars that are going to pay for this position. That's all I, I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not arguing one way or another for that, but I, I think we have to make sure that we think we get X number of dollars for each student that's enrolled, but it costs us X number of dollars to educate that student. So the net-net is actually, we.
That's correct. And that, the cost to educate is a, it's a factor that the state puts out there. It's based on what are our expenses divided simply by the number of kids?
Right.
So if we have five less kids, obviously that number jumps a little bit. If we have five more kids, that number goes down. But it's not a direct correlation. So if we have one new student in all eight elementaries, we don't necessarily have to hire another body.
Correct.
In order to educate that student.
Correct, yeah.
Could I comment on that for a second? A couple of things with, with enrollment. Enrollment's a tricky thing, is that back in 2017, we had UC do a 10-year study. And they predicted every Butler County school would have a declining enrollment because there's a direct relationship in Butler County with what is the birth rate, and five years later, how many of those students enroll into kindergarten? So this was predicted throughout, not just Hamilton, but throughout the region. I think what skewed the numbers even more so is that there were students that were just simply lost during COVID. And I don't know what happened to those students, but those enrollment numbers have been skewed a little bit with that. The other piece that Mr. Frazier's talking about is, if I've got 18 students in a class, and I can have five more into that class, I don't need to hire another teacher because now I got 23 students in that class. If I got 27 students in that class, and I get five or six more, now I got 32. It's a bad number, and you're going to have to hire another teacher. So all of those nuances have to be looked at when, when you're talking about what is the impact of enrollment and staffing and, and those issues. I think some of our biggest issues right now is we are getting more high-need students that cost more to educate. And we have every, we, we, we have every obligation to educate those. And I don't know if the funding that's associated with educating students that have higher needs is correlated accurately. And, and those are all factors. When we look, and as Jeremy said, we meet every Monday morning and have these discussions. We're looking every week at enrollment trends, up, down, because it does impact us. And so all of that factors in.
Yeah, and I always just, all I'm saying is I'm not, not making it an argument for against, but I'm just saying that we need to make sure that we understand the, the math on that. And then my other question is, Dr. Kopus, in what you're saying, would you propose that, that if, if we would create this position, the Director of Communication must be a Hamiltonian?
Well, I would certainly support that. I don't know that that was something that we can require, because if in fact, we did earnestly recruit for that position, and I, and I find it hard to believe we couldn't find anyone, all the other local districts have someone, how can we not?
Well.
But, but I understand your question. My preference would be yes, someone that knows Hamilton.
Yeah, because I mean, if you look at the job descriptions and, and what they're required to do, there's some skill sets that, you know, just because, I mean, you have to make sure that we look at all of that. And, and again, I'm not arguing, I'm not saying yay, nay, or whatever. And, and in looking at that, I mean, I looked at Lakota and I thought, oh my gosh, they've got five people in there. That was a little much. But I, I, I don't know. I mean.
I think another, I think another point to be.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not.
Yeah.
I think another point to be brought up is that when the former Communication Director required, retired, a month later, COVID hit.
Yeah, that's right.
And so we had a period of time where we couldn't, we couldn't get anyone in here to even, even speak to them. And it was a, it was a significant period of time. We couldn't, we couldn't even interview individuals. And so that, that was troubling, because if we could have acted right there without that component there, I, I, I think the pool of applicants would have been much different. And so I just, I, I think out of fairness, we need, we need to bring that up as a point.
I'd like to weigh in just a little bit.
Yeah.
Number one, when, 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 the past few years, we were also looking at, and we were called by the district to reduce our administrative numbers. And that's, and that position, Director of Communications, was an administrative position, unlike any other, but it was an administrative position. And when that happened, Mike and I had several discussions, because I was board president at the time, and could we fold some of those responsibilities into Mike's job, into other employees' jobs? So it wasn't that we intentionally said, we're not going to promote the district. And we went through other avenues, too. Especially with TV Hamilton, we explored other avenues on doing that. I'm not opposed to doing, to hiring someone to take on these responsibilities. I think we have a great district. I think we have a great opportunities to tell our story. I do know that, and I, I want to say this in all loving kindness, we do a lot of things in this district that are just incredible, that teachers don't always realize how great it is and how unusual, not just unusual, I hate to use the word unusual, but how spectacular it is that we, that people need to know. I know that TV Hamilton did the, was it the snack thing over at one of the schools got some awards? Was that the one, Steve? Did, I mean, we just take it for granted that kids are going around providing snacks and stuff like that. And other schools are like, wow, this is fantastic. We have great stories to tell. We have tried different ways. Sometimes, people in our district, our teachers and our administrators, don't realize how cool the things are that we do in the arts. I mean, when we, when I talk, I'm going off a tangent real fast, but when I tell people all the different arts activities we have in our district, and they look at our district being, you know, we're free and reduced lunch issues and stuff like that, they are amazed. We have so many good stories to tell. I'm in agreement that we need to find somebody to tell our story. I don't, but in the past three years, how that is told has changed so rapidly. I'm not sure that a full, we had to have one person, that's all they're going to do. Or if, I would like to depend on our super, superintendent, associate superintendent, just to really put together a job description of what do we need, what positions, what, where are our holes right now? Can we find somebody to do that? I think, Joe, you're right. We need somebody to write stuff like that. We don't always have someone on. Now, I thought you were reading from the obituary, from Bill's obituary in the paper, to be honest with you. Because I was amazed, I was amazed at what I saw in the paper. I, I, I thought that was a kudos to the family and our condolences to that family, because I know how important he was to Hamilton. But I think that we, we need to find a way to integrate that position, so it's not a standalone, but it's somebody that can coordinate what's going on already in social media, can work closely with TV Hamilton and, and the Journal and all those things, and be a, a pillar, or I would hate to say a pillar, but be an important component of how we express ourselves as a district. Because we have spent the past three years, and part of it's COVID, we, we've all become more siloed, and we need to get the word out because there's a lot of good stuff.
And, and I do think, and I do think the climate's changed. And I think, Dave, you, you brought that up, and I think that's a good point, in the fact that when this position first was sitting there, COVID started, we were more concerned about feeding kids than we were about some of these other things. But, you know, we're beyond that now. And I think that good leadership always examines the situation at, at the time and makes decisions at that time. Well, that climate's changed. And so with, with the changes in climate, you, you may have to adjust.
And last year's changed, you know, with.
Last 12 months have.
Well, that, that whole situation's changed.
I, I think, I think how, how we communicate has, I mean, I think of my 37 years, and I think how, how we communicate now with parents, how we communicate amongst one another, has changed exponentially. And, and we, we need someone that has the tools that can communicate in today's world as well. I, I think we bring, bring up the Journal News. The Journal News has completely restructured their entire reporting, where they don't have a specific educational reporter anymore. So less educational components are even being placed in the Journal News with Hamilton. And I, I met with the new person, and he's great, but he's also covering the city. And he's doing both. Where you used to have someone specifically for all the schools in Butler County.
So, so may I, may I say, it sounds to me like all of us don't have an objection. It's just how we're gonna, how we do it. And, and is it, you know, I don't know that we need an administrative position that's Director of Communication, but to your point, Lauren, I think we ask Andrea to, to write up what we think we need.
That's what, what I'd like to recommend is, we're obviously in the middle of a massive transition this year of going from one superintendent to the other.
Right.
Our current organizational structure is built around Mike, his strengths, his needs, what that looks like. That's what a leader does, right? You surround yourself with people that are going to fill those areas. What I'd like to recommend to the board is that we take some time as a board to look at what that new structure, I'd like to be able to, this spring, propose a structure to you, with an emphasis on communication being one of those pillars, one of those important components, as we look at that overall structure. Into that comes personnel, needs, but also finances. I think we need to really look at what that looks like long-term. I think there's a, if there's a will, there's a way. We can find the dollars, we can figure out what that looks like. But I really would like to use the rest of this year to figure out what that structure looks like, so we know exactly where that is. What I don't want to do is hurry and rush and onboard someone right now, and it doesn't fit within the, the grand scheme.
Mrs. Blevins, I think you're right on cue with your thoughts here, but I disagree with what Mrs. Baker said. I think my, I envisioned this position being an administrative position, extremely important, and frankly, one of the most difficult jobs in the district, maybe comparable to yours.
I, I, let me, let me refresh that. I'm not saying, I'm just saying, looking at it is, you know, you're, I didn't say I'm not saying, I'm just saying, looking at it is, you know, you're, I didn't say I don't think it should be an administrative position. If I came across that way, I apologize. I just said, you know, again, it's back to Andrea, what does, what does the district need? What does she need?
Yes.
And she comes back and says, I need an administrative position, then fine.
Right.
You know, I mean, I, I'm not saying that we don't make it an administrative position. So, I need to clarify that, so.
If you get the right person in there, it's going to be a very.
There you go, if it's the right person.
Yes.
If you get the right.
And that's why I want to take that time to build that, that piece out. I don't want to plug someone into our current structure if there's going to be changes or roles and responsibilities. And so, that's where I would just like to use this, that's something I'm going to propose to the board at some point. I would like to, this is actually something Mr. Davidson shared with me, that years before on the board, they used to do a yearly board retreat, where they would have an evening, they would go over yearly goals. I think that's a great practice that we're going to look at the summer. But something in my conversation with Mr. Davidson that I think we both saw value in is maybe doing that this winter. You know, we've really not had time to sit down as a board and say, where does this look like? We're going through this transition. What are those key things? Before we get to August, you know, I want to get out in the community and hear from the community what their needs are. There's, there's all kinds of work that needs to happen before August 1st of next year, where the board, myself, our senior leaders, I would like for us to come together. So, I do want to propose that we start that in November. I, I think all of these ideas are valid. I don't think anyone, I think you're all saying a very similar thing. My piece is, can we just build that into the larger kind of an infrastructure?
And I agree with that. And I, but one thing I want to kind of, to make a comment on, to the point of what we were saying, you know, when Mr. Holbrook took over this position, you know, it, it came after a very contentious person that, that came in. So, he, he's thrown into that, you know, put into that, and it had a lot of bridges that needed to be mended. And then you get COVID, and then you get this. So, let's remember that he, like, got thrown into a fire.
Absolutely.
And quite frankly, has done a marvelous job. And now, we, that, that has smoothed over, and we're into a different.
Mode.
Mode.
Or different areas of focus, yeah.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that we, I, I mean, I just don't want us to forget the fact of what he had to go through.
A point that Lauren brought up, that people don't know what's going on in our building. Example was grandparents' day. They saw the technology, you know, and I was there two days, fourth grade and sixth. Some of those parents had never been in the building, grandparents. They were floored by, you know, the technology and how nice our buildings are. And that's what we need to market. I mean.
Absolutely, Dave. And you know what? I don't remember whether it was the high school or the freshman, I think it was a freshman school I was in recently, they have a class in advanced robotics. What? That's ridiculous. Let me give you an example, Mrs. Blevins. Young lady, may I ask what your name is?
Tierney.
Tierney. Now, educate me, what is your role in the district?
I'm a parent.
You're a parent? Okay, well.
Has an important role, Joe.
She's got a very important role.
But thank you for being here, and so, this question will go to you also. I know you, but I just can't think of your name.
Jennifer.
Jennifer. Ladies, I have a question. Did you know that our football team has four billboards in the city of Hamilton?
I've seen a couple of them.
How, how did you become aware of that? You drove by and saw it. Did you know that? And it's okay if you didn't.
I did it because my child has a different E. My son does bowling.
Okay.
So, we don't see any emphasizes.
Well, and you're right, and that's unfortunate, isn't it? You know what? I'm a board member. I didn't know it until I drove by and saw it. I shouldn't have to drive by it to find out about it. Those are the kind of things we need to know. The community needs to know, and we don't promote that. The thought is to keep those billboards, if I remember correctly, year round, and promote all of our athletic teams, our academic teams, our fine arts programs. I think that's wonderful, but nobody knows about it. That's just one small example. We, we need a Director of Communications.
He used to.
Oh, go ahead.
I've seen, I'm a student from 2006.
Okay.
So, we had state champions in 2004, even so far and all that throughout the city. You see it posted.
Yes.
The champion, the things like that. I mean, you know what it is, right? It should be on.
Well, I appreciate your comments and couldn't agree with you more.
If I made you, part of the reason the billboards are up is because the billboards themselves are the, are the message. I hate to contradict you, but the, the billboards themselves are the message. Yeah, as a board member, we may not know about, but I don't expect us to know everything about billboards and stuff. What I, but where my thing is, is we have a tool that no other district has, anywhere that I've seen, in TV Hamilton, and they do a fantastic job, and are doing more and more within our schools, just like the sports thing. They couldn't do the, TV Hamilton couldn't do, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, cannot, could not do the Baden-Hamilton game. We just, there was technical issues and other issues. But they are doing more and more in our schools to promote our schools. No other, no other, no other district that I know has, has that asset to them for reaching out on it.
Well, no, I agree with you, and I don't mind if you contradict me or not, but the whole point is, we should have been aware of that.
Well, it was the football program.
Yeah, I do want to share.
The biggest issue.
I understand.
The biggest issue with that is we did not get any communication for 501(c)(3) that they were even going up.
I understand, Mr. Holbrook.
So, I can't, I can't tell you something that I don't know about.
I understand, but the point is, you need to know.
Okay, so.
I think Mike Wright had it.
Yes.
The, the only thing I was going to say from an HR standpoint is, when we look at this position, it's going to be extremely important down the road, because what I'm hearing in my HR mind is I'm hearing communications, but what I'm really hearing is promotions, public relations, a lot of these other pieces that are.
Yes.
More all encompassing than just when, when you typically think of a communications director, you think of a person who is relaying information. And I think if we're really looking at this position, we need to, we need to really identify within that job description, exactly what things we're looking for from this person to be able to do, and make sure, again, that we do find someone that has that skill set to be able to deliver what we're looking for in that position. That way, we're making sure we do get our money's worth with what we're looking for in that position.
We're just using the old term, but if we'd be more of a public relations director.
Right, and that, that is.
And I would agree with that.
Yeah, and that, that's why I'd like to really look at this in totality. I, I think there's a need and there's a niche. There's a, there's a market for us to look at this through this transition. I just think it's going to take longer than today for us to sit down and look at those. I, I wanted to get your input of what those things we're looking for. I'd like to work with, you know, Mike Wright and I really need to sit down and look at what those are, pull some job descriptions, talk about those organizational structure and what needs are moving forward, and then that, present that to you, and then actively recruit in the spring.
And so, I, I'm going to kind of try and pull this all together, so that we can, can move on in the agenda. I believe that it sounds to me like we are not, I mean, we all agree, there's something that's needed. And you let us know when we need to, through this, through our November, whatever, but I just want everybody to know. I think it's been a good discussion. I think everybody understands what, what is needed, but clearly, it's got to be you and Mike Wright that, you know, kind of come up with what the need is.
One comment, and it's not about the director, but it's about the billboards.
Yeah.
Can we look into maybe keeping those billboards district wide and using it like what Dr. Kopus said, for the basketball or, you know, graduation, putting, you know, our top scholars.
Or seniors up, yeah.
Throughout the, the district.
And Dave, I think that's a great idea, but as Mr. Holbrook pointed out, the current billboards, I, were not paid.
They're not ours.
No, and there, there's also some, some law that we would have to consider with Title IX. If we use district dollars for that, you're going to have to promote every single program similarly.
I understand.
That, that's one of the reasons some of those are funneled through 501(c)(3)'s or booster programs.
Understood.
I will share that Mr. Pettit, who organized that for the boosters organization, did share with me the contact if we were to pursue that. So, I at least have that there for a further decision or discussion. We would have to make sure that it is representative of everyone.
Yes.
Due to the legality of those pieces, and weigh that, you know? And what is, again, what's our strategy? What is our promotional strategy? Where's the best need? You know, Mr. Pettit has lots of ideas of which one would be the most important and what, you know, and, and I think there's, there's conversations to be had.
So, if I, if I understand this correctly, so if, if we're outside the sports arena.
Yeah.
When we're talking about the billboards, like for academics, the arts, ROTC, then we don't have to worry about some of the same law type of situations. And we have done billboards. I've done fine arts billboards. We've done academic billboard.
I think if we were going to do them, we want to be all encompassing, of not just our athletes, but our fine arts performing groups. All of our students have such diverse talents, and just speaking back to, we have so many great things in this district, we want to highlight.
Yeah.
So, if we were to pursue this, I think we have to find a strategy to encompass all groups, all represent, from bowling to show choir to everything under the sun, because all students and their passions matter.
Well, and eventually, that, whatever that position is, is going to be the one that's going to start coordinating on that.
Correct. Again, that goes to that strategy of what's our approach, right?
Right, right.
What do those look like?
So, I think we've had a good discussion. Thank you, everybody. We now need to move on, I think, if, if that's all right, to no other comments, to now, this should be an interesting topic as well, the district's cell phone policy. So, again, Mrs. Blevins.
So, thank you, President Baker. As many of you are aware, there is a new House bill, Ohio House Bill 250. I did provide you guys with some information at the end of our last meeting, that requires every school district of the state of Ohio to either have and review our current cell phone policy. It does not require an amendment, but it does require, we are lucky, we already had one in place, so it is a matter of us looking at that and determining, are there changes that are needed? Is it good in its form? What would we like to see moving forward as a district? And so, that's kind of where we are. We do have to have all changes to our policy if they are going to be made by January of '25, so that's the timeliness of this particular piece. This is a topic that has a lot of feelings on every side of the aisle, from staff to parents to students. You know, there, there are a lot of thoughts. Many of our students that are in our classrooms are technology natives. They've grown up with it since the first day. I know that it creates some distractions in classrooms, so it is a very worthy conversation for us to have. And, and that's kind of what I've laid out to you, is I'd like to get a lot of input on this. We're not going to be able to make everyone happy, because again, there's a large spectrum of where people feel on this particular issue. But I listed out for you kind of a proposed process that I'd like to go through to garner input. And so, I'd just like to share that and then get your feelings on if you think that's the right direction to go. If there's any input that you'd like to provide, that would be great. Then the goal would be to come back in November to give you an update, a recommendation, and I'll explain that here in a minute. And then if there are any policy reviews, we would look at those in December, vote on them prior to January, okay? So, kind of what I'd like to do is put together a collaborative team, that is our HCTA teachers, as well as our administrators, to come together in October to look through our current policy, to talk about what the challenges are, and to come up with a plan to garner input. And that would involve a survey that goes out to our students, to our parents, to our staff, to you as board members. I want to know your thoughts, for then our committee to come back to the table and to make recommendations. What is the best way to do this? I will tell you, I think absolutes are hard. Absolutely no is really hard. Absolutely yes is really hard. And so, I think we've got to put some additional guardrails on what we have. Right now, we have a very umbrella policy, but it's the wild, wild west out there, on every side, staff and students. And so, that's where I think we've got to really get the input of the people who are dealing with this every day, our staff and our students and our families. You know, in the lighten, in, in the heightened sense of the security alerts, I have had multiple parents reach out to me and say, please don't take their cell phones away. I don't know what I would do if there's a threat. I've had teachers that have said, please, they are causing such a disruption in our hallways. So, I think the best thing to do is to get our experts in the room, to get the voice of all of those parties that are going to be impacted by that, and then make the best decision forward that we can. Nice thing is, we can always adjust that if we see it is not fitting down the line.
Well, Mrs. Blevins, I commend you for this information that you gave us last month. This was outstanding. I also think your thought process is correct on how you're going to gather information. Very appropriate to do that. I'll gather a little information right now. What do you think, Mom? What should we do? What would you do if you were going to decide? Now, that's not a fair question. Don't answer that. I'm only kidding. You'll have a chance to answer. You'll have a chance to put your input in. But no, I agree with the process here, and I, I think you will arrive at the right answer.
And the big piece that I didn't mention is whatever we decide on, where we land that in December, communication, the conversation we just had is important. Our students need to understand that, our staff need to understand that, and our community needs to understand that. So, you'll see there's a big push that in December, after we adopt it, it's not just this is the new thing, and they'll figure out as it goes. We need to have a big campaign of making sure that our students, our staff, and our families are.
Yes, and I also appreciate the fact that there's some flexibility there. If, if we later decide that, you know, maybe we didn't make the right decision, we can adjust as we move forward. And I would also say, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I read in an online edition of the Journal News, where I think Mrs. Blevins was quoted, correctly, I hope, as saying, you know, we may consider working with a consulting firm to make this decision. My personal belief is, we don't need to do that.
The, the quote that was in the paper is Neola. They are the company that keep all of our board policies.
Okay.
So, when I said that I was consulting with them, all that was is gathering, because the state put that draft policy out there.
Yes.
They also make recommendations for us of what we should adopt. And so, that is a free of charge, part of our kind of all encompassing package. But I don't want someone who's not a part of Hamilton City Schools, our community, our students, our staff, to be in the room to decide.
I agree with you, and that's what I was hoping to avoid.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah, I, I thought that what you laid out was, was great. I think it's very appropriate. I think that's the right direction to go. And, and again, we have to have some of that flexibility, so that we can kind of shift as, as we go down that path, and some things will work, some things won't. But I, I do truly believe that it comes down to how do we communicate it and how do we enforce it?
Right.
So, that's my comment.
I agree with that, Snook.
Yeah. I think, I think it's a great plan. We've, I think you've had the opportunity to see what, what's happened in other areas when a, when it's a top down decision, and it's, you know, the board has made a decision or the administrators, and without that, that input, and it's, 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 it's a learning situation. And we're, and I think having this opportunity to step back and, and see what's going on in other districts, and getting, garnering the, the information from, from all the stakeholders.
There you go, official.
Are we still using that word?
That is, that is still official.
If we're still looking at the stakeholders, I think it's the, the way to go. And you're right, there's going to be problems, but once we, once we decide that we want to, that we're backing it, I feel strongly that we, as a board, need to support that policy.
Absolutely.
And there might be nuances in it as we go along, but I, I think this is a big enough problem. I hate to say problem, but it's a big enough concern within the schools. We've got to figure out a way to, education has got to come first.
And I will tell you, there are a lot of very, very intelligent teachers in our district who have already approached me to say, hey, have you thought about this? Instead of a one size fits all, can you allow us this if we communicate to kids in the classroom, this is our particular, what that looks like? This is our particular, what that looks like. You have some zones that cell phones cannot be used. So we set some guardrails and we, we communicated through, it's not meant to be punitive, but we want kids engaged in lessons. We want kids engaged in learning. You know, we are so connected to technology all the time. You can take my phone anytime you want. But I think we've got to find a middle road with our students. We are working with HCTA, actually with Jen, she's helping me garner. I want a teacher from every single building. And I've asked them to, to really try to get people that are interested in this initiative. There are some teachers, I don't care which way you go. You know, you've got some that it doesn't matter what the initiative.
If I'm hearing this correctly, let the, let your rep
Union is going to pick those.
Union rep know what you, how you feel about it. And, and I, I like to hear ideas. I like to hear it. I mean, it's not just complaining.
Right.
What do you want to see happen? You know, what, what ideas do you have that, that you've seen of work?
Right.
And it's not an all or none.
It's not. And that's, that's where I think, you know, our, our team's going to come together to really talk about what our charge is. We're then going to put together a plan for how are we going to garner that feedback? And then we're going to come back together, sifting through that feedback and then making sense of what fits for Hamilton City Schools.
Whatever we come up with, we know we're going to have pushback from somebody.
Correct. Correct. We are. And that's why
You're not going to make everybody happy.
That's why I started it. Such a polarizing topic that there's no way to make everyone happy. But I do think there's a middle ground that's reasonable, logical, and makes sense, that it doesn't become a bigger. I don't want our teachers spending 40 minutes a day monitoring cell phones either.
Yeah.
That, that is not, that's not good use of their time. So we have to be reasonable in what those approaches are. And, and we'll talk through that. But, you know, I'm hoping in November that will be on our work session agenda. Because I'd then, after we present to you kind of our proposal, I'd like to get the board's blessing before we write that into any changes in our policy or administrative guideline that would come in December. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
That's good.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sorry for so much time tonight.
No, that's quite all right. It's all important stuff. Okay. Next on the agenda is the agreement on the VA property, which
Thank you, President Baker. You all have in front of you a summary of TIF legislation packet. The packet has a summary on the front. It has the detailed calculations behind it, which you may or may not be able to see. I realize it's quite small. We have the board resolution attached as well as the school compensation agreement with the details of the revenue sharing. So in a nutshell, what we're talking about is a $6 million medical facility for the VA that is on Gateway Avenue on the east side. It's between the bypass and Gilmore Avenue on Hamilton Mason there, where there's a lot of other medical facilities.
Oh, by, is that
There's a, there's a field there right now on the corner of Gateway and Hamilton Mason that we're getting about $200 a year on. And we'll go through some of these calculations. But again, this, this is another one of those economic development deals that it's a no-brainer for the school district. So again, it's a, it's a $6 million medical facility for the VA. The deal is a 10-year CRA, 50% abatement wrapped inside a 30-year, 100% TIF. It's a make-whole agreement for the school district. So we're going to get what we would have gotten absent the TIF in the CRA. And we're also going to get 50% of the income taxes generated on the property, which are significant because we're talking about doctors and x-ray techs and, and those types of, of folks that are be, that will be working there. Again, I mentioned, we're currently receiving, it's actually a little less than $200 a year for that piece of property. And the calculations are conservative when we look at these. And we, we always do conservative calculations. The 30-year projected revenues are just north of $3.5 million for the facility. And that includes the increase in property taxes on the make-whole agreement as well as sharing the income tax with the city.
And there's no debt?
There, there is no debt. The school district will be in first priority. And like we've talked about, all these deals are different.
Yeah.
Sometimes there is money in the deals for us. Sometimes there is not. And that's what, you know, collectively, we need to weigh and say, is this something that, that we want to do for the community? This is one of those deals where there is, there's money in the deal.
Yeah. And we've talked about this deal, I think, several times.
Yeah. The, the, the big thing that, that I love about it is you, that we're getting 50% of the income tax
Yep.
For the life of the project.
Right.
For the 30-year TIF. Absolutely.
Does that include the, the construction too?
Yes.
Wow.
On a piece of property that right now we're getting $200.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, like you said, it's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer for us. But we have to publicly introduce it. And then it will be up for a vote here later this evening. But yeah, it's
Mr. Fraser, there's, there's three reasons I really like this. The make-whole agreement is wonderful. And I'm not a math major. I was a science major. But to me, we're going to go from a 30-year income of $6,000 to over $3.5 million. So that's unbelievable also. And what I really like is, at my age, I may need that VA medical facility. I agree with you, this is a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, that ends our work session. Does anybody need to, want to take a break before we go into business, into the business meeting? If you don't, we can move on.
Mrs. Baker, may we take a break?
You certainly may. Do I need to? What?
We're in recess.
We're in recess. Thank you.